Welcome. This is St. Helens City Council Work Session, Wednesday, April 15th, 2020. We are on live broadcast and through Zoom. So at this time, I will hand this over to our IT person, Matt, and Matt Brown. And can you? Can you get us all aboard on a roll call by chance for staff?
I can. John, do you want to go ahead and start?
So I think a roll call of the council is probably appropriate. And then if you want to identify the staff that's here at the meeting.
Yeah, can we identify staff first?
This is John Walsh, City Administrator.
My name is Matt Brown. I'm the Assistant City Administrator. Margaret?
Margaret Jeffries. I'm with the Public Library.
Sue?
Keith Locke, City Counselor.
Sue, go ahead.
We're working on staff, Keith.
Sue Nelson, Interim Public Works Director.
And let's see. Lisa, do you want to introduce yourself and unmute yourself? Kathy, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Kathy Payne, City Recorder.
Come on, guys.
Crystal, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Crystal King, Communications Officer.
Michael Doria, if you're there.
Mike Doria, Building Official.
And Brian Greenway?
Yes, Brian Greenway, Chief of Police.
Okay, do we have it for staff?
I believe so.
Okay, and now for City Council. I'm Doug Morton, Council President, and I'll be running the meeting.
Jenny Carlson, City Council.
Keith Locke, City Council.
Steve Topaz, but something just happened here. Steve Topaz, I can see me, but I don't know if you can see me.
Yep, we could see you, Steve.
We can see you.
Good, then I'm in.
Yeah, we don't have you on the top nine up there, though, however.
That's fine, as long as I'm on the bench next to the cookies.
Okay, we hear your voice. We know who you are. That's kind of what I had in mind, just in terms of roll call. So Mayor Rick is his birthday today, and I'd like to wish him happy birthday. He tells me that for all his life, he's been out on the river fishing on his birthday. So he asked the council permission that if he could do that, and we granted him that. And so he's out fishing today. So I don't think we'll, I think we'll bypass singing "Happy Birthday" for heaven's sakes. We would just wish him a happy birthday if we can in our reports, okay? First of all, I'd like to open the session up to visitor comments and limit each person, limit to five minutes. And please identify yourself as you come on. And I'm going to hand this over to our moderator, Matt Brown, to work through the timing and the comments.
Thank you, President Morton. If there is anybody who would like to make a public comment under the Participants, if you click Participants to bring up, you have the ability to raise your hand. So if anybody would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand, that will notify me that you would like to speak during public comments. You can also hit yes or no. That will also signify and help identify me. See a few people that are raising their hands. When I get to you, I will go ahead and unmute you. You'll have the designated five minutes to speak, and then I will unmute you once the comment's on to go to the next person. So Steve Berg, I'm going to unmute you.
Okay, yes, this is Steve Berg from American Property Management. We own the property at 445 Port Avenue and 201 Port Avenue. They're in St. Helens. And we're concerned about this proposal that's going to be introduced by CCMH through, what I'm told is to round up the homeless people and to put them into a camp at McCormick Park. We were told that there was a transient park there years ago, not that long ago, and there was essentially constant problems with fences being cut, with locks being broken, and variety of crime in the area. And we don't see how that's going to help in this COVID crisis as far as bringing a bunch of those people together and gathering them up and putting them in one small area. So that's our concerns, is we're concerned about the crime and we're concerned about the health aspect as well.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to go ahead and mute you and go on to the next person. Jamie, I'm going to unmute you.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jamie Smith. I'm a resident here in Columbia County, and I am on to respond to the homeless response too from CCMH. There seems to be quite a bit of different options that are being thrown around, but yet I feel like we haven't really given a clear what the ask is. Opening it up to the, you know, we can't have the parks right now for the COVID response. And so it seems a bit ridiculous that we would bring in and have camping there yet again. Especially one of the things that I have heard is they're potentially coming in from Portland. I feel that there's families here in our county that need help. And if this is approved, I want to understand what the processes for ramping down, but also helping those in our county versus bringing in from outside. We have a lot here in the county that I think we should be supporting before we go outside.
Thank you, Jamie, for your comments. Diane Dillard, I'm going to unmute you.
Okay. Honorable City Council, I'm in opposition to the proposal for using McCormick Park as a homeless camp. I am not in opposition to the city finding a homeless camp, but not in McCormick Park. The city has Boise acreage, and you have property from the hospital that could be used. That park just received a $25,000 grant from Moda for further improvements. It's used by so many people, the softball kids, the soccers, and best of all, used by the St. Helens Recreation Center under the leadership of Shannon Dugan. It is a wonderful place for disc players. It's a known nationwide. And I also know that it's the home to the VFW, the Veterans of Foreign War Memorial Wars. Our children, our citizens, do not need to be exposed to trash, needles, unused drugs because when those people leave, there will be a cleanup that probably would cost a lot of money and a lot of legal stuff. So I'm encouraging the City Council to vote no at this time on this proposal. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Diane. Robin L., I'm going to unmute you. Robin L.? Okay, we're going to move on to Chelsea Stroppman. Chelsea, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you so much, Matt. My name's Chelsea. I'm a resident of Scapus. I've been a resident of Columbia County since 2013. I'm actually more interested in listening to what the proposal for McCormick Park actually is. From my understanding, it's just to open shower facilities to folks that are unsheltered. I'm very much in support of the notion of doing what we can right now to help our unsheltered families have shelter and support and want to be a part of that solution. I'm working right now on a grant proposal to get some funding for Columbia County for a broader, more comprehensive solution for unsheltered families and specifically focusing on women and children that are fleeing domestic violence right now. We know that a lot of folks are being sheltered now with their abusers. There's kind of an increase in domestic violence and a decrease in reporting to DHS since educators are generally the, you know, first line of defense in the mandatory reporting system. Been talking with Heather from CAT and Dan Brown and Ellen Baker from SAFE. They are just such incredibly fabulous folks, and we have such amazing infrastructure already available. And I would just want to, I guess, maybe just let you guys know that there is kind of some collaborative discussions happening. And if anybody here is on this call that wants to discuss that and kind of join in and link forces, citizens as well as local leadership, let's find a solution for our neighbors that don't have what they need right now as we also honor all the valid fears and concerns that our fellow citizens are voicing right now. I'm an attorney and have a lot of experience with legal research and drafting and stuff. So I'm offering, actually took a leave of absence from my firm to focus on our local community needs right now. So I just want to let the City Council and local leadership know that I'm here to be a resource and also just like an advocate and a cheerleader. And I actually, if the proposal is to open shower facilities, I would be fully in support of that, knowing that the county currently only has Hudson Park shower facilities and then Scapus RV Park facilities open for unsheltered folks right now. Yeah, so I'm excited to hear and then also join forces to collaborate, to find a solution and to work together to honor the concerns and also to honor the needs and meet those needs for our neighbors who don't have what they need right now. Thanks.
Chelsea, let me interrupt for just one minute. Normally, we have accounts in our council chambers. We have a sign-in for people who are testifying. And that way, people can go back to that and find contact information.
Sure.
So at this point, at this point, since you are, have a life effort and you're focused on this issue, that might be good in all fairness to give your to give your contact information if you care to.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Morton. And I'm actually going to send Matt Brown a private message right now with my email address and my personal number so that you can be in touch with me in lieu of the public sign-in. Does that work?
That works.
Great. Thank you so much for that suggestion.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Let's see, I'm going to try and go back to Robin. Robin, are you there? It does not appear Robin has on, so I am going to go ahead and move to Autumn Oliver. I'm going to unmute you.
That's you.
Autumn?
He can see you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and unmute Oliver. We'll go to Brady.
Hello, can you hear me?
Brady, you are live and going right now.
Well, I'm Brady Prey. I'm in Livingston, Helens. I'm calling to comment about the proposal for McCormick Park. My understanding is the CDC guidelines have said that the public restrooms that are already in the park are to be closed because of the concerns over the coronavirus. I don't see how opening it up for showers is actually a benefit. I think, in fact, it could be detriment to the homeless people. If one of them is infected, it could be infecting a huge, making the problem worse rather than helping. So in general, I'm sort of opposed to a homeless camp. I think that we need to find a better solution than putting people at a camp and certainly not at a camp at McCormick Park. I think we need to find appropriate housing and not camps. And I know that that comes with a lot of financial ramifications. But I think putting them in a park with sharing facilities with no way to test is a disaster waiting. And, you know, think that we should work with the county and CCMH and other resources to try and find permanent housing for those people who are homeless. And finally, and I don't know if anyone there, I know it's not supposed to be a question and answer, but my question would be, if someone could respond at some point, how many actual homeless people that they believe are in the county and would need to have housing in the park?
Thank you, Brady. Councilor Morton, that appears to be everyone who wanted to speak during public comments.
Okay, do you want to go back on Robin L. and?
Yeah, I can try one more time. If not, I will open up the chat to her so that she can send me a message, and if that comes up, I will grab your attention. Robin, this is a final call. I've unmuted you if you would like to speak. Does not appear so. So Doug, if you want to go ahead and move on?
What about Autumn? She started when you switched. Sorry, Doug.
Oh, no, no, thank you for saying that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, she, her mouth started moving after you turned her off.
I apologize. Autumn, are you available to speak?
This is her mother, Heidi Oliver.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I'm a little concerned. My daughter lives right next to McCormick Park. We've just been granted a grant for new playground equipment. I'm wondering who's funding this homeless camp? My other concern is I see a lot of people migrating from Longview, Washington, which I know there's a homeless camp off industrial way. Those people do not want help. They do not want to take, they have destroyed the area there. My concern is we've got a zillion apartment complexes going in. Our infrastructure is not classy at this time or up to par. And why are we having an area for homeless and degrading our area? We don't, we can't even take care of what we've got or what we've got moving in, let alone providing an area from Portland and Longview for homeless, especially not in a park. I guess that's what I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt, for moderating that.
Not a problem. Councilor President, I did hear that it looks like Robin does want to speak about something, but for some reason, her microphone or speaker system is not working. So I will try and get your attention when I get either a message or an email from her.
I appreciate that. Well, let's move on with the agenda now and go to discussion topics. And first up would be the homeless pandemic response at McCormick Park by Linda Pritchard from CCMH. Linda, are you there?
It does not, I see her name listed. However, does not appear that she has her audio connected. Linda, are you calling over a phone? Okay, Linda, I see you in the chat. Can you tell me what your phone number is? And then I can merge your audio so I know which number to unmute. When somebody calls on a phone, Council President, I only see their phone numbers. And then I see a name added as two different areas. So as soon as Linda can tell me her phone number through the chat, I can unmute her.
Okay, rather than, rather than going forward, we'll wait.
Linda, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for helping me through the technical aspects of this. My computer at home has some internet challenges, so I thought I would phone in to make sure I didn't get kicked off. So at Columbia Community Mala Health, you know, we are taking a look at a lot of different aspects of our COVID-19 response. And one of the areas that we're really very concerned about is that of our unsheltered population here in Columbia County. So we've been working with Community Action quite closely and with the county and public health in talking about what it is that we could do and do well for our unsheltered population here in the county. And so right at this point, our ask is that we be able to utilize the showers at McCormick Park from 11 o'clock until 1 o'clock, Monday through Friday is what we would prefer, we would prefer, but we would be willing to go on a Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for showers and our grab-and-go food that we're handing out to people in need right now and hygiene kits. So that's our ask for McCormick Park. It's never been about bringing in people from other counties or anything like that. We really just want to have a response for our population here in the county. One of the, one of the challenges that they've been faced with is that a number of businesses, the library, some of the public restrooms that are out there have been closed down. And so their abilities to be able to attend to their own hygiene needs have been severely disrupted. And so we're trying to manage some of the basic services that are needed for this population during this pandemic. And one of them is to be able to shower properly and to clean themselves properly. And so we want, that's the ask for McCormick Park at this time. We are working with public health to learn how to properly clean those restrooms. So we've talked with Mike Paul around receiving some guidance on what to do around that. And we would be putting whatever standards he gives us into place for making sure that we aren't creating a vector for transmission through the showers or through the restrooms themselves.
Is that, is that your, is that your entire testimony? Linda?
Well, I want to see if possibly Dan Brown from Community Action has anything that he might want to add to that.
Dan?
Sure. This is Dan Brown from Community Action Team. I'm the executive director here. Just wanted to echo what Linda was just explaining. This has never been about bringing any additional folks into the community. We've already established a number of restroom facilities around the community. We have some hand washing stations up. We are already providing meals a number of days a week. The one thing that's been missing is the ability for them to shower in any of the locations. So that's really what this ask is about. We have been working with a plan as far as social distancing during the midst of this. There will be probably a sign-up sheet with time slots for them to use the facilities. We'll be following whatever guidance is okay by Michael Paul for the cleaning in between the uses. I don't know what else to add to that at this point.
I'd like to add an additional comment if I can. We will be doing some screenings of people who are utilizing the showers. So if somebody is ill, we are able to identify those individuals and get them additional service. And the hours of operation for the showers would be staffed by a combination of CCMH staff and possibly some Community Action Team staff.
Okay, is that, does that conclude your presentation? And I would like to open it up to questions, not deliberation, but questions from our council, and I will include staff members as well. So I'll start off with the first question. And that would be, why McCormick Park? And there are other shower facilities that could be much more, that are much more out in the open, Columbia View Park, for example, in our city, much, much more in the open. And I have, I would, and it just seemed like it would, it would be more effective. I'm concerned about people moving in, once they open up McCormick Park, making certain that they move back out. And it seems to me like a, I'll wait for deliberations. And I just wanted to ask that question, why McCormick Park rather than the fairgrounds, rather than some of the county facilities that are available? Why? Could you answer that so then we can move on to other questions that the council might have? That's my single question.
So Columbia View Park is down by the waterfront there?
That's one of the options. I mean, that's one of the, that's one of the, yes, it is. It's in clear view of everyone. People can have their distance. They can do all kinds of things. Kids won't be playing around that park if they are, they aren't in close proximity of the restroom. It just makes it, I just want to know why McCormick Park was picked out of all the other facilities that are available? Is this just?
We looked at McCormick Park specific to it because it had shower opportunities. What we're looking for is a park that is located, you know, somewhat centrally located for easy access. My understanding, and I'm not sure if this is accurate, but is the shower that is down in that, in that particular park, my understanding, it was not operational?
Columbia View Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, the restrooms are closed at this point.
Right, but in my understanding was the shower itself, is there showers there?
Yes.
Okay, my understanding is the shower was non-operational.
Who told you that?
The county informed us that one of them had a fire in it and was closed.
Okay.
Again, that's all I know. And again, you know, we're not locked into any particular shower as long as there's, it's somewhat centrally located.
I want to give you, as long as I'm questioning, I just want to give you an experience that I had that I was on Cycle Oregon quite a few times. And what they do on Cycle Oregon, there's a city, it's actually a moving city, of 2,500 participants, 2,000 recipients, depending on what the route is. So what they do is every night, they have showers. And they've been out in pastures. They've been in various places throughout the route of Cycle Oregon. And they bring in a shower facility on a trailer. And they have six different, six different shower stalls and a cleanup facility. Did you by chance, and this is a question, following up question, did you by chance look into this before you looked into McCormick Park?
I can take that one, Linda. We did look into it. The price, the only, the best price we could find was $62,000 a month.
You can't rent those by the, in a daily, in a daily format?
Well, I think the fact that we'd be pulling it in at least three days a week made the price better per month, but I'm not sure about that. But regardless, it was an awfully big price tag.
Well, it consists of, those things can facilitate a tremendous amount of people in one day.
Well, again, we're not trying to get a whole lot of people in one area in a single day.
Okay, all right. Thank you for telling me that, and I'll open this up to further questions from the council.
I would follow up, Doug. I have seen trucks, 18-wheelers for the same business, other places. And I would, again, some of the ones that I've seen were owned by cities in other cities to have somebody actually loan one of these portable facilities. I like that idea, own better really than using any of the showers, the permanent showers that we have. One of the problems we have unfortunately is the homeless have a bad reputation about not have unfortunately is the homeless have a bad reputation about not leaving the area very nice. I mean, I'm sure the showers would be cleaned up by the staff, but they have a bad reputation about what they do. And I think a lot of people are very much against any of this because of their past reputation.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Let's go with Jenny Keith. She, I think she had, she had first choice there.
Sorry, I just, I hadn't, you know, obviously, we have a community of 15,000 folks. And every time I've been to McCormick Park since the COVID, I've seen single people taking walks and using that park. Doesn't seem matter what time of the day, if it's light outside, our citizens are using that park and maintaining their social distance. And I don't want to take anything else away from our citizenry. This council took a stand on making the parks a smoke-free zone several years ago, after we eliminated camping in that area. It took us years to get them cleaned up and get everything situated. Just, I'm very hesitant to put any of the city assets at risk. And I realized that there's going to be staff there, but there's, you know, it's, we're all trying to maintain, you know, our buckets and social distancing and have the healthiest, most desirable community we can have. And I just don't want to get into a situation of promising something and finding out it's, this is really not a good, good match for our citizens.
Do you have a question by chance?
I just didn't know if they realize that all of our parks are smoke-free.
Any, would our participants or people who are presenting have an opportunity to respond to that?
Think our intent is to follow whatever regulations come along with the park. It's not to supersede any additional or any existing regulations.
Okay. Thank you. Linda, you have, you have any comment?
I would agree with that comment. We're not looking to, to not follow, we want to be able to follow the guidelines of the park and the rules of the park. We're not looking to ask for a change in the smoking policies of the park at all. I support them, actually.
Thank you. Counselor Locke, Keith?
So, I have not actually heard that there will be no camping there, which was the main question of most of our citizens.
We are not asking for camping for our unsheltered population at McCormick Park. We're asking for the use of showers between the hours of 11 to 1:00, Monday through Friday. But if, if that felt like it was too great, we would agree to, we would be very happy to have Monday, Wednesday, and Friday.
Any further, any further questions from council? Council of Topaz?
The, hopefully, you know that across Old Portland Road back in, to the east, there is camping. It's not supposed to be there, but there is camping in the area. So, to say there's no camping in the park is only a distance of feet. And if we have another opportunity to gather, that puts another burden on another piece of our ground. Well, I agree, it's not the park, it still is camping.
So, do you have a question, Counselor Topaz?
I wanted to know whether they understood there was camping in the area, even though it might not have been okayed by the city, but there is camping in the area.
Okay, any other further questions from the council?
I have one for John. John, what's the status on the men's bathroom down by the riverfront at Columbia View?
John Walsh?
He's muted. I'm muted, right. Okay, so it looks like I'm not, looks like you can hear me. So, the restroom has been, you know, had the fire damage, the smoke damage, and it's repaired and it's ready to open. But the time it was open is about when it closed too. So, it was really kind of, you know, much to do about nothing here. But, so, yeah, Columbia View is, is operational.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? I have one. And this deals with timelines, two different timelines, specifically, one for the time during the day, and the other timeline is, how long will this continue? And what's your, what's your financial, what's your financial situation for funding this in terms of, in terms of policing it, in terms of cleanup, and all of that? Do you, have you, have you got finances to work on this?
So, I'd like to make a comment real quick on what John Walsh had indicated. We're not attached to McCormick Park. If there's a better park with shower situation that we could get permission to use, we would be happy to use the waterfront park. So, I can, I can speak to the finances behind CCMH in regards to our COVID response for our unsheltered population. We do have some funds that, programmatic funds that we are using for this, and we do have some staffing that we are able to, that work with homeless populations generally, that are able to provide the staffing for this program. We've also, at one point, attempted for grants that we weren't able to get, but we do have some funding around food and some other necessities through our, Care Oregon and CCBHC to be able to provide the services that we're proposing to put out there. So, we do have some funding. As far as the duration of this, you know, that's, that's a big question on all of the situations that are coming up because of COVID-19. And I guess we would be looking at when our governor opens back up our, our state a little bit, and that need is no longer there, we would be, we would be stopping that. My understanding is that they're anticipating sometime in May that that might happen, but there's no hard and fast timeline on, on when that is a possibility for people to kind of get back to work and get back to business as usual. So, I don't have an end date that I can share with you, but I can let you know that we're not intending this to go on as an indefinite effort on our part. We're, we're just intending it to be in place while the city is kind of locked down, and there aren't those resources for the homeless folks that they're used to.
Well, the city isn't locked down in terms of our parks. Our parks are open, and it's just the restroom facilities are not open, and we have a porta potties to help facilitate that. So, the city is not, in terms of parks, the city is not locked down. One of the other follow-up questions that I have is, we, am I on? Okay. One of the follow-up, one of the follow-up questions that I have is that the school district is closed apparently until the end of the year. Now, it seems to me that in terms of shower facilities, the athletic teams that participate in athletics have, and PE have tremendous shower facilities. And have you tried by chance, talking to our superintendent and the educational board, and, or have you only just tried our parks? That's my, that's my question. How much research have you done around what the community has here in terms of workable facilities? Now, my, my feeling is, is that we have two showers at McCormick Park, and two, two showers in each, on each side, women's and men, and, and two at Columbia View Park. The amount of shower facilities at the school, at any of the schools, is phenomenal. I haven't counted shower stalls or anything like that, but it seems to me like it'd be a more workable situation. It would be more manageable than, than having people around our parks, and especially around our children. Our children will be in those parks, and that's, to me, a huge concern. So, I want to ask you, how much, how much work have you done, and how much research have you done of other facilities such as the school, the school systems, and where are you on that?
Doug, while we're listing other groups, the governor is involved in this. It's a big deal. And the National Guard, the army-type folk have portable showers. Is there any possibility for this group to go to the state and have the National Guard facilities available to them?
Good point, Steve, and I, that's a good follow-up on my question. I appreciate that.
So, we were working pretty closely with Alex Tardif on, on the issue of trying to figure out showers. And I know he had been looking into schools and potentially using those, but I don't, he's not here, and I don't know how far that got, to tell you the truth. So, I can't directly speak to what he discovered when investigating that pathway.
I see. Okay. So, you have no answer on that in terms of where, how much research that you folks have actually done in terms of finding other places? I think Steve Topaz had an excellent point of view of involving the National Guard Armory. Mine was just suggesting the schools, and I think there's others out there as well. And it's just a matter of finding them. And so, I think I go back in, in terms of your, your, your statement at the first is, what we want to do and do well in helping facilitate the, the homeless and the unsheltered homeless is, it's my, it's my question. I hope we do, I, I just hope we do that well in terms of the research of what the options are. At this time, I'd like to open that up to staff for questions. Any staff members want to weigh in? I mean, after all, you folks run the city day in, day out. Sue Nelson, Public Works Director? Go ahead.
I was waiting for it to be unmuted. Thanks, Matt. I just wanted to comment that one thing that may add a complication to, if, if they were looking at the Columbia View showers, those are coin-operated only, so there would have to be some workaround there. Also, the, the, John mentioned that the interior of the one side that had been fire damaged has been restored, but we haven't had the electrical completely checked out in that unit yet. So, that was my only comments.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments from staff or questions? I'm sorry, questions?
Counselor, this is Dan Brown from Community Action Team. I was muted there for a bit. I wanted to respond a little bit to the school proposal, if I may.
Go right ahead.
Again, we did not seriously consider the schools, quite frankly. Number one, we really can't control where they go as much when they enter a building of that size, or even a locker room of that size. If we're going to be cleaning all the surfaces that they may potentially touch, the smaller of a facility that we use, the better off we felt like we would be. Using a public park seemed, you know, how do I want to say this? Logical second choice. Our first choice was actually to bring in some sort of a portable facility, but the cost of that has been prohibitive so far. It doesn't mean we couldn't check into the National Guard. I don't think they've got quite to the point where they're providing those facilities for cities at this point. We are certainly not the only city that's looking at this, trying to find a solution to this problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? And do you have any, Dan and Linda, do you have any kind of conclusions or any, any kind of final statements?
Not for me, just looking for a solution.
Counselor Morton, this is John Walsh. A comment on why the restrooms were closed in the first place, and we're trying to follow the guidelines about community, you know, community safety. But it was also an issue that they were closed even before the order went down for the safety of our workforce there. You know, they were just getting vandalized every day. All the toilet paper getting ripped out of, out of them. It was, you know, a lot of work keeping clean, and it was really challenging. So, it doesn't sound like that's their proposal here, but that they're going to do that cleaning piece. But the, that component where the expectation for the city workers to be maintaining that is a little bit of a concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other, any additional comments before we move on? And the reason I gave this more time to clear up with our counselors and with our staff is because we had six, a half a dozen people commenting through the visitor comments. So, that's one of the reasons I kept this going. It seems to be a hot issue in the community, and we will deliberate possibly at, at, at some time. I would, possibly tonight, and possibly at our next council session. I appreciate Dan and Linda, you coming forward and making your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Morton?
Yes.
May I do a quick roll call? I know Chief Greenway wanted to speak, and I know possibly Margaret and Michael Droyoff in the Building Department might want to speak if you're, if you'll allow that?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm sorry that I, that I, that I moved forward.
No worries.
They want to speak. I didn't see a hand go up or whatever, so.
No, it's okay. Every, since everybody's muted, they've all been chatting with me privately, trying to get on, so.
Okay, well, let's stay, let's stay with our, our homeless pandemic response at McCormick Park, and we'll continue. So, who we got first?
Chief Greenway.
Yes. Hi, council. Chief Greenway, some, some concerns reference this idea. You know, your police department treats everybody with the utmost dignity and respect, whether it's a homeless person or regular citizens. However, we do have concerns with this proposal. We do support your, the council's suggestions of looking at other avenues, to include, can they possibly use some of that funding to bus some of these homeless people to Multnomah County, who also offers shelter in place where they can sleep? The biggest concern, from my 30 years of experience in law enforcement, 25 being in a major metropolitan city, dealing with a homeless population twice the size of Portland's, that's being Las Vegas, Nevada, is that if we open any park in the city, you will have residual effects once the COVID-19 is done, or once the showers are shut down for the day. Simply meaning, those homeless populations will not go back to where they're at. They're going to start camping in the park, in the outskirts of the park. So, a question to be asked, and it doesn't, a general overhead question, who's going to police this problem? As you know, the police department of St. Helens is short-staffed. We're doing our utmost best to limit our, our connections to this virus, so we can continue to offer police services for seven in this city. If one of our officers gets infected with this virus or has symptoms, we have to quarantine them for 14 days until we can get tested. We can easily shut down the entire police department in a matter of 72 hours based upon encountering an individual with COVID-19. So, my point to that is, we do not want to risk further contamination with anybody that possibly could be contaminated with this virus. Secondly, is in 2017, the city of San Diego experienced not a COVID outbreak, but a hepatitis C outbreak. As we know, the city, or CCMH has a needle exchange program to reduce the possibility of hepatitis C, but our officers and citizens encounter hypodermic devices throughout our parks and our community on occasions. And if we congregate our homeless population in that general area by inviting them into showers, we could see an outbreak even worse than COVID-19, and that's hepatitis C. God forbid, one of our small childrens in the area picks up a needle. And one last thing I'll leave you with is, we, the police officers work diligently. I polled them. They are not in support of this. We do support helping our, our, We do support helping our, our, our housing challenged individuals, but not bringing them into an area. That's hard to police and will have access by our citizens during the day. It's just a recipe for disaster. I support the idea of having other avenues, maybe the high school or maybe even using some of the CCMH facilities to, as a shower. Putting showers on their property and hiring private security police staff. We do not have the staffing to support this. As we, you know, it was mentioned early, we do see a spike in domestic violence calls because of people being quarantined in homes currently. And we just don't have the resources to make sure this is safe and and continue it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Michael?
Michael did not have any comments. Margaret, do you have any comments to say?
No.
Questions? Okay. Then unless somebody raises their hand that I can see, I believe we are ready to move forward. President Martin?
Thank you. Let's go to Communications Third Quarter Report. Crystal?
Hang on one second, I just need to unmute her. Crystal, you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so this report covers January through March 2020. COVID pandemic aside, we have actually had a lot going on the last quarter. We started out with the 2020 State of the City meeting. And promoting that followed by a community survey that we pushed out for the community to complete. We had a very successful St. Helens Recreation Youth Basketball. League that was held at the recreation program that I assist with promotional work on. We had several make it programs that were held at the library through the youth librarian. The Police Department held a cooker with a cop event at Burkeville in February. And I worked with several of the staff there on their annual report, which we have released for 2019. We had several. Police cases over the past couple of months that have garnered some media attention. Both locally and through the Portland metro area. And we published our annual freshwater news crew schedule ad and article on St. Helens for. Hopefully what will be maybe a shortened, but at least some portion of a summer voting and. Yachting season for St. Helens. I worked with Kathy on creating a template for a new employment brochure to feature St. Helens. So that we have a brochure that looks. A little more professional that we can send out for some of our management positions to, to promote that to. People across the state and country. We had several police phone scams that occurred this last quarter. That we put some messaging out to people about what to look forward and and not to do over the phone. If you have somebody claiming that they're a police officer, contact you. I sat on the Columbia County Complete Census Committee. Margaret Jeffrey also sits on that committee as well. We had two in-person meetings before the COVID pandemic hit. And obviously, the pandemic has sort of changed the way that we've tried to push out messaging related to the census. But the census is still happening. It's been delayed a little bit and they're pushing out some of their. Enumerator in-person calls to, to people, but we are still trying to promote that. Both through our e-newsletter and online. We have about a 50% response rate right now, self-response rate for St. Helens, so we'd like to see that number as high as possible. Before the census is complete. We also this year worked on promoting the Columbia County Reads. Program, which is a collaboration of all libraries in Columbia County that read the same book. This year, we weren't the lead library. On that program, but we did volunteer because we have more resources. To assist with the initial promotion for them, so we did the press release for everybody and sent it out. But unfortunately has been canceled now due to COVID-19. We also did a small feature on the Great Cliffs and Wyeth Street Stair Improvement Project that was really well received by the community. We had the Moda Assist Program Voting that happened from McCormick Park Playground. We were approached by Moda to fill in that third spot that they needed for a community. And fortunately for us, through great promotions between a bunch of different people, we won that program. So I look forward to promoting what happens with that in the future as we receive more information from them. I worked on the communications budget for next fiscal year. And then COVID-19 hits and I've been working almost consistently on that. For the last month or so, between press releases that we've sent out, each department has, has had its own. Separate response. To the pandemic along with changes to hours and how they operate. We've had a lot of website updates on each of our department sites as well as the main COVID-19 webpage that we have on. Landing page of our city's website. I've been doing some consistent social media updates on that. I've been attending daily regional public information officer calls. That are run by Multnomah County Public Health, responding to a bunch of media inquiries that we've had. And trying to amplify some of the messages from our local organizations. So moving forward for the next quarter. I anticipate that we'll still be dealing with COVID-19 information. All of next quarter, possibly into the quarter after that. Still working on doing some 2020 census promotion to make sure we get. As high of a self-reporting count as possible for St. Helens. We'll have more information out as we know more from Moda about what the new playground at McCormick Park will look like. As is, seems to be the case in the last few years, we generally have some larger police cases that start to occur. Around the late spring and summer as the weather starts to get better, so I anticipate. We maybe will, I'll need to devote some of my time to some media follow up on police cases. I've already been working a little bit with Gretchen on. Sort of what's going to be happening with the summer reading program this year. The library still plans on holding a summer reading program. A lot of it might be online initially, but we're working on how we're going to promote that to the community right now, since people can't show up in person to the library. And then obviously, we'll have event updates as any COVID-19 impacts affect how 13 Nights or Fourth of July. Might be handled in the upcoming summer. And that's all I have for my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Hearing none. Crystal, thank you for your fine work.
Thank you.
Oh, Counselor Carlson, do you have, I saw you, I saw you waving. Hi back. You got something, can we unmute? Counselor Carlson, there we go.
It's like I should have a little white flag. I still have a question. I had a question or maybe just a, like input on Crystal's focus that I don't know whether it's a question to answer. As we go forward, I notice a lot of local businesses that are doing curbside pickup. And I just, I appreciate those businesses that are trying to persevere through this time. I fear for a lot of their outcomes and what if this really drags on most of the summer. And I didn't know whether the council would support Crystal. In supporting our Main Street businesses or creating a list of some kind of about people that are still open for business. I just didn't know if that would be appropriate, something for Crystal to do. And that's a John question or council question? And you know, it's basic economic development and I just don't know how we help those few businesses that are still managing to stay open and keep people employed.
Yeah, I can. Counselor Martin, I could change, change it on that, the. You know, this, the role of the city in this pandemic is, you know, there's a lot of. There's so much out there, so much information out there and I was going to offer a compliment to Crystal for doing such an outstanding job with the. Keys of communications, working in such a. Complex environment, we're all virtual and things and. The city's webpage, the COVID, there's a button on there for COVID and resources, and so we're trying to be that resource connector. And I know that tourism's kind of on pause right now, so some of the work that Tina's doing has been to identify those businesses that are open. And, and promote them on social media as much as possible for, so they can, you know, try to survive through this.
Thank you. Any other, any other?
Other group that maybe or could Crystal help the food bank and. Some of that, that's not a business, but definitely needed within the community. That and what the senior center is doing, is there any way that the PR or the needs of those people can put, be put in our system or are there rules against it?
Good point. Crystal, are you still there?
I am still here.
Got a response for that?
We do have some resources on our COVID page related to the senior center and the food bank. My can, only concern with the business promotion piece of it would. Be to somehow try to coordinate that info with the chambers since they have all those connections already where if they have somebody there. I know I've seen Tiffany from Doc's side doing some requests out to businesses about who's open and what their hours are. But if we could somehow coordinate with somebody at the chamber. Who could have that list of resources available that they're updating and liaising with businesses on, it would be easier than for us to amplify that messaging.
Thank you. Good comment. John, you have something?
Yeah, I have one more thing to say about, we, we prepared. Outreach to the business community to. By way of a letter either electronically or in person to the people that we know that are local businesses to ask for what. You know, if they need any help, basically, kind of resources, we can connect them with. That was my, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any, any other comments regarding Crystal's community? Again, Crystal, thank you. Thank you so much. Let's go on to our financial third quarter report. Matt?
Thank you, President Martin. I did want to mention, I did happen to miss Ed Trompke, Jordan Ramis's attorney. Who did have some comments in regards to the homeless pandemic response discussion. He is happy to email his comments later during that meeting if you do not want to go back at this time. But I wanted to give him the, give you the opportunity to, to see whether you wanted him to speak now or he can email comments. From the discussion to council members after the meeting.
I would rather, as long as we're, we're up and running, I'd rather have him speak now and go back to. Then our. Homeless pandemic response and, and I get it from him.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and unmute him. Ed, you should be ready to go.
Okay, I, I'm not letting you see me because I'm wearing a sweatshirt, not a tie today, but.
Oh, we want to see you then.
In, in any case, and you may hear the laundry running in the background, but I apologize. But I was concerned a little bit about city staff and risk assessment of. Actually physically cleaning out the showers and other surfaces. For areas used by the homeless for showers. I would want to make sure that the people involved, to the extent that they are city employees or volunteers. That they not be exposed to a hazardous work condition. Because there is civil liability for that. Whether or not that would apply here is, you know, hard to say what judges will do two years from now, looking backwards. But I would want to make sure that the people involved. To the extent the city asks them to do it, receive special cleaning. Instructions and training before they do it. And that probably is going to involve having the PPE, the personal protective equipment, whether that's. Plastic suits or, or H, N95 face masks or whatever, I don't know, because I'm not a health expert, but. Health experts ought to be involved. And that, that whatever the recommendation from the Health Department and the CDC is in that regard. That the city take that into account, what the possible liability might be in the future. And to get that training beforehand and the equipment just for that purpose. And, and so. In some regards, I support what the, the chief said, Chief Greenway about it. My internet connection is unstable, so it may not, you may not be hearing this properly, but I, I do somewhat support the idea of. Taking people to an appropriate facility where they can receive shelter as well as showers and other services. But that's not a hard recommendation, but I can't say no to what the chief was suggesting. And with that, you can mute me again.
Thank you. Thank you, Ed. I appreciate it. And Matt, thank you for. Giving a heads up on that. I appreciate it.
Not a problem. So I'm going to jump into the financial reports and please let me know, raise your hand if there's any questions that you have. Overall, we are looking fairly good. We've received about 94% of our budgeted revenue. As most of you probably know, most of our revenue for the general fund comes from property taxes. And general charges for services, which are mainly internal fund service charges. Most of our departments, as I believe we have talked about at the last prior meeting. Have not completely frozen expenditures, however. John Walsh and myself have asked department managers to refrain from. Any spending that really is not necessary. So we've tried to curb as much as the upcoming recession as we can to help save some money. The Visitor Tourism Fund obviously is a little bit of a mixed bag. In how our visitors and events happen. Between revenue and expenses. Usually there are a lot of heavy expenses and revenue is seen at the very end. About this time now is when we actually start to receive, usually started to receive. Sponsorship money for states.
Thank you for lunch, Dan.
For. Revenue for some of our state sponsor or city sponsorships for events and tourism events. So because of the COVID-19, some of that revenue has not come in. So we likely will address that a little bit later on in the year as we finish up. Other funds are pretty healthy as far as revenue and expenses. Are kind of on track for what's estimated, especially in our enterprise funds, water, sewer and storm. Are all, are all doing fairly well on revenue and expenses. One thing I did want to notice or point to your attention was actually at the very end of the reports. I know we're, we're talking about and constantly discussing internally, as I'm sure you're getting a lot of feedback from the community. On revenue and expenses for the city. One thing I want to point out is this 2019, 20 bar graph right here, which is the single family resident permits issued. We have reached kind of the five-year high, looking at the previous four years for single family resident permits. Obviously, there's a lot of development going on in the city right now. And even just reporting these first three quarters, so not including April, May and June. We've already reached the five-year high for single family resident permits issued. So that's just an indication that building is still going on, building is still happening. Obviously, our building department and planning department and engineering departments are busy going through plans and doing everything like that. Are there any specific questions that I can answer about the financial overview? I know this was kind of a quick presentation, but I know we have a fairly lengthy meeting potentially, so I didn't want to go into too much depth.
So the.
Counsel?
Target is the overall. Projected revenue for the quarter is on target so far. The next report will show that shortage.
That is correct.
Okay.
Any, Matt, any guess on the last half of the year, which is way out?
You mean as far as kind of July through December?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you'll see that in the proposed budgets, actually in our meeting tomorrow. As well as if you've had a chance to review the proposed budget for next year, that fiscal year starts in July. And we are being cautiously optimistic, so what that basically means is the, the sky is not falling, however. We have been pretty cautious on, on estimating what revenue is going to come in. As well as holding some positions open and not filling them to ensure that. We're kind of waiting to see how the recession in the economy unfolds before bringing on any new personnel or large expenses.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I was asked a question about the school excise tax.
Oh, yes.
Just for the record, could you just talk about that so it gets on the record? It was asked, you know, in the community on a sidewalk. So I thought would have that. I did not answer, ask them the question. I didn't answer the question. I told them that I would have Matt answer the.
Yeah. So just a brief overview, the St. Helens School District, along with several, almost all school districts in the state, have the option to have the city apply a 1% excise tax to building permits. This is actually not something that a city can say no to. It's up to the school district to pretty much just take it to the city for, for approval. And so that places a 1% excise tax on building permits, and that 1% is held by the city. And each quarter, I do a calculation to figure out how much of that excise tax goes to the school district. So this last, last check that they received, I believe was around $70,000 or maybe a little bit around the, so it's fairly larger compared to some of the previous ones they've received. And that mainly stems from all the building permit revenue that we're starting to see with single-family developments, as well as the apartment complexes. So they receive 99% of that 1% excise tax. The city gets to hold 1% for processing fees for the time that it takes to record the fees, do the check, all of that kind of things.
And it's, it's been going on for a number of years. It's just a big amount because of the boon in building?
That is very true. So it's, it's really nice when the building is going crazy and there's a lot of stuff going up, so they get more money. On the flip side, though, when the, when a normal recession hits and there's no building going on, they don't get very much of that excise tax, obviously.
Okay, I just, this doesn't come out of any general fund or anything weird like that. It's just a pass through for the, for them.
Correct. Actually, so when we.
I just want to make sure that's crystal clear on the record.
Yep. When we received in those funds, they are actually held in what I refer to as a liability account. So they're not even considered revenue for the city. It's held until the end of the quarter, until I can do that 99% to the check, and then I transfer 1% to building permit revenue for that 1% that we get to keep.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure for the record that it was all those facts were on the record.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, let's move on. Matt, you're still up for a request for proposals document for janitorial services?
Yep. So we brought this up, discussion up a little while ago with the city council about potentially looking at going out and hiring somebody for janitorial services. When we got some feedback from some council members, as well as some staff members, it was asked of why we were deciding to hire somebody versus going out for contracted services. Contracted services obviously don't, we don't, the city doesn't have to pay health insurance or retirement and those things that come into play when we hire an actual person. And so what we've gone back to the drawing board and looked at is going out for another RFP for services. Since we began, and Kathy may be able to speak a little bit to this as well, but we've been with the same company for a number of years, and we are at to the point where we need to add some additional services and facilities like the rec centers. And we've also had some current discussions with our current contractors about stuff that we did not feel was being done as much as we would hoped for in the contractor, much as we were wanted. So this is an opportunity for this company, as well as any other potential company, to respond to the RFP to, for services for cleaning city facilities.
And, and Matt, I, I do have a question while we're at it. Is there additional addendums that provide disinfecting and more further cleaning, deep cleaning than what's happening now?
There are some minor additions that we've, we've noticed, and those are things that were brought on by each department manager who oversees the facility. So things that we wanted to make sure that were done every day versus three days a week versus five days versus doing deep cleaning. I think it's in here every quarter or every six months or so that we get the carpets deep cleaned and the windows on the outside cleaned. So we've kind of beefed up the services, so to speak, a little bit, which is why we've, we're bringing in RFP too.
I'm thinking more of the COVID-19 process of making certain that, you know, everything is done so that we're in safe environments throughout the city. If we're asking our workforce to show up and actually continue to work, then we've got to provide a safe environment without a doubt. So is there any addendums to, to that process for, and that's for dealing with this right now?
Yeah, there, I may ask Kathy or John to speak to this. There are no specific mentions in this RFP to the COVID-19 crisis that we're going through right now, other than just kind of beefing up the specifics of what our expectations are for the cleaning service to ensure that we are making sure that we're letting them know what our expectations are, which I think we've kind of missed the ball in the past about getting down on paper what things need to be cleaned and how often.
I'd like to hear from John and Kathy regarding that. Kathy, you want to go first?
And yes, the, the supervisor for TVW actually contacted me with an email to say that they are doing extra services for cleaning than they were before, just because of the COVID-19. So they have stepped up to do more cleaning than they were before.
Okay, good. Thank you. And John, can you get unmuted there and respond? Matt, he's muted.
I believe John is muted himself.
Yeah, okay. Now he's unmuted. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah. Similar to what Kathy just expressed there, you know, this is a for general services type of cleaning, and our current relationship with the, the cleaning services has been enhanced. They're doing more frequent cleanings to try to assure the highest workplace safety that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Now, enhance cleaning versus hopefully the COVID will be gone, we'll say in three days, and we don't need them, we don't need the enhancement after three days, or is this general forever? This is a really super special cleanup business.
So I can probably start on that, and John and Kathy can add anything if they want. This RFP is for services in general. It is not specific to the COVID or any enhanced extra cleaning.
Yeah. So the question is, how do you handle the super clean that you need for, quote, a short temporary business? So that was the real question.
Some of the, the protocols that we've put in place as far as, you know, closing city hall, not letting people in, you know, we have sanitizer stations all over the place, wipes, sprays, you know, even handling of documents. It's really on our minds to follow the best practices we can. And the staff is, is here in the building because of that. So, you know, we're distancing, but at the same time, we're also being, taking every precaution that we can, so.
Great. Any other comments? Matt, are you finished with this?
Yep.
Okay. This is one that, that I brought forward to the agenda through John, and it was because I was asked this question on a, on the streets, so to speak, a discussion regarding the request for proposal process for IT services. So can we, Matt, can you review that and review any concerns that I brought forward to you and John by chance?
Yeah, absolutely. And I would also invite Ed to speak as well. I'm gonna go ahead and unmute him, just because I know he was part of some of the discussions that I had with Jordan Ramus's office over the concern about the process that the city used for the RFP. So just to recap real quickly, the city went out for an RFP back in November of 2019 for IT services. We did not complete that RFP in January, was when a contract renewal, automatic renewal was done for CenterLogic. That, whether we chose company A, B, C, or CenterLogic, that automatic renewal would have already been forwarded to you as well, just because of the time lapse and transition time for going from CenterLogic to potentially a new company. So that contract renewal was done in January. At that time, that was when the IT incident happened at the city of St. Helens, and kind of a little more opened our eyes to some of the issues that we were having. So we went back and reviewed again the RFPs, and had the discussion at the last meeting over ending the contract with CenterLogic and moving forward with a contract for, with more power. And Ed is available and available to speak on the attorney's side as far as what process the city went through, and if there was any concerns with that. Ed, would you like to speak at all about that?
The only concerns from our side are, were that we didn't quite understand exactly how far through the process you had gone. And if the scoring had, had proceeded to where you had evaluated and chosen one RF, one proposal or over the others, at that point, then we thought that you might need to go through a full new RFP process again versus where you just sort of let it go and decided not to pursue that process further, then you can proceed again. However, there are limits on how big a contract the city can enter into without going through the bidding process again. And so we just wanted to make sure that the city hadn't exceeded its authority on, on that. And I was present at the last discussion where it occurred, and it didn't dawn on me at that moment that there could potentially be a problem. But I wasn't also aware of the, the process that had been followed last year. So so the bottom line on, on all of this is, is that you directed the, at the last meeting, you directed staff to proceed to enter into a contract with the more, I've forgotten the whole name of the company, and that can continue to proceed. But it probably makes sense to, in the future, bring it back to you for final approval of a contract that gets negotiated with more, either as a special service contract or under one of the other contracting provisions of the code. So you may want to revisit it after the city manager and, and staff review the whole contracting process with them. I guess that's the, the best way to put it. I wasn't prepared to speak about it, but, so if I sound like I don't know what I'm talking about, that may be the case, okay? Sorry about that.
Thank you for the clarification. And Brady, is Brady up for any kind of questions, since this is an agenda item, and it did, it, it did include him in this process? Are we okay, staff and council allowing Brady to weigh in on this?
Just, just a point of clarification that Brady did not submit anything for this RFP process. So he was not involved in this RFP process. So it would just be bringing someone from the public to speak.
Right. And, and in the RFP process, only, only submitters can file objections or other issues with the process.
And I believe he was a submitter?
No, he was not.
No, no, there were only two submitters.
Okay.
Was waving, though. Was Keith waving, or was he falling down?
Jenny, go ahead.
No, I thought Keith was signaling.
Oh, I'm fine.
Okay.
Well, and, and basically what needs to be done is to extend the time period a little bit with the concurrence of the, of the bidder. And I understand that's being done. And then the, the final contracts can be, the final details can be worked out and brought back to council for final approval. But it's just a slight delay. It's not a, anything that's a, a big change in the process.
So Council, the request from the Jordan Ramus and Ed Trompke, and the attorneys there, were to request that more power extend their proposal through the end of May. That way it would give us time to finalize a contract to bring back for council approval. So I wrote them an email and CC Kathy and Jordan Ramus's attorneys, so that they saw that more power was perfectly fine with extending the proposal that was submitted through the end of May to finalize a contract to bring, bring back to the council for approval.
Okay. So staff, are, are you postured to work through this in a timely manner?
I believe we definitely are. We've already started talking with more power about the transition. They've been in touch with CenterLogic, who were made aware after the council meeting of our intentions to leave. John, do you have anything to add?
Of just that CenterLogic has been longstanding, and they've been very cooperative in the transition, so.
Okay.
Well, I apologize for not being prepared on this. I, I was unfortunately working on another project this morning and hadn't reviewed everything this morning. But I did speak with my, our other counsel who's been working on it, Matt, call yesterday or Monday about it. I just hadn't thought about it since then.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to our next agenda item, library department request. Margaret, are you prepared?
Yes. Good afternoon. I have two proposals before the council, and they both involve proposed expenditures from the library facility fund. And the library facility fund was created when the old library building was sold in the 90s, after the construction of the building we currently occupy. And that fund was dedicated exclusively for maintenance issues related to the building. And in my time with the city, my experience with expenditures that have been made from the fund include the exterior painting of the building recently, the new roof, a deductible for fire sprinkler repair that had to happen. So it's, it has a history of being used for significant items. There is a facility maintenance line in the library's general fund budget, but it is strictly for routine things, occasional special projects, but not for anything of any magnitude. So the two requests that I have before the council, one involves the lobby and the two meeting rooms in the library. I've gotten the assistance from Public Works to get quotations. And the request, the first request is permission to spend $22,300 from this fund for interior painting, floor coverings, and a minor lighting replacement. The closure of the library gives us a unique opportunity to get some projects done. And the floor coverings in the building are the original floor coverings. Well, not the ones that we're discussing. The library carpet was replaced sometime in its prior history before I was here, but we're talking about the, the lobby, the auditorium and the Armstrong room. Those floor coverings are all the original ones, and they look like it, too. And so I just felt like this, these were, this, this set of expenditures in this first request were things that I hope to propose in the next few years, based on the project lists that we put together for the council that you saw recently. But with our extended closure, I just felt like it was a unique opportunity to get some of this work done behind the scenes. And because this, the funds in this, or the money in these funds are not anything that compete for any other uses, it's just a question. compete for any other uses, it's just a question really of timing. And so that first proposal is for the painting and floor coverings in the lobby and meeting rooms with a minor lighting replacement included. The second proposal is a similar proposal for $14,150 from that same fund for further enhancements to the Makerspace. Now, you previously authorized expenditures for sidewalk construction, electrical and data lines and some door hardware changes. And all those were necessary for us to occupy the space. The proposal that I'm including today is desirable, but it's not necessary for occupancy. It's desirable in that if we did this now, we could not have the disruption that would come from having considered doing this later. The enhancements that are proposed are to put vinyl plank flooring instead of carpet and to install a sink. And those enhancements really make it more usable as a lab space. And I, I forgot to mention, we also, in first proposal, it includes vinyl flooring for the Armstrong room. And that is the smaller meeting room that also has a sink in it. It's like, it's like a mini kitchen. And that small meeting room gets used by a lot of groups that are actively involved in things like craft activities or things that involve food because the little kitchen there, we have a lot of Girl Scout activities in there and cleaning up the carpet after kids have used glue and glitter and construction paper is, would be a lot easier if we had a different kind of flooring. So the two proposals include that same type of flooring for both the Armstrong room and the Makerspace. And again, I got the assistance of Public Works in, in getting these quotations.
And is Margaret, just a clarification, is Public Works going to do any of the work? And I read through that, it seems to me like they were going to do painting and that kind of thing. Is that, is that right?
Public Works would do the painting. So the cost here is just the cost of things like the paint and, and Visqueen and that sort of thing. In the case of the, the sink installation, there is going to be some need for some sheetrock work and some flashing up on the roof. And Roger indicated that that would be what he would do. So the material costs are there, but not the, any labor for Public Works to do those additional things. The rest of the work is utilizing electricians, local flooring company and local plumbing.
Good. Well, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
Counsel, you got any, are, are you finished with your?
Yes.
Presentation? Counsel, you got any comments, particularly Counselor Topaz, that's, that's kind of your, your, your department? So what do you have to say?
Well, it, it, we decided a long time ago, it needs to be done. The timing actually will probably make it a little bit cheaper to do because the access to getting it done without people is a big, big help. So since we're going to do it and we have, for a strange reason, no people in a way, I would go for it as quick as I can.
Okay, got a thumbs up on that. What about Keith Locke? How about you, Counselor Locke?
Sounds good to me. Go for it.
Two thumbs up. Counselor Carlson, what do you have?
It's all covered by your facilities maintenance fund?
Yes, that fund currently has about $173,000 in it.
And didn't we do a roof not that long ago?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean.
The, the 173,000 is after the roof and the exterior painting that we have done in recent years.
Yeah. And just at the time I've been on council, you've done that stuff.
Yes. And the balance, that 173,000 will go down slightly for the prior expenditures that were approved for the Makerspace.
Super. And then, not today, obviously, but sometime in the future. I know that you did some strategic plan envisioning stuff for the library and sometime going forward, I'd like to see what that is. You know, make a part of a report or something to kind of hit the highlights, to just remind us, we're going over this list of all the priorities for council goals. And I know that you, I participated in that planning process and it'd be nice to be reminded of what those items were.
Certainly.
That some of them you've been working on and some of them are still, you know, left on the list. It'd be nice to just remind us of that list.
And there are also things that we didn't even conceive of at the time we did the strategic plan and the Makerspace is one of them because we didn't envision that we would have available space to us in the short term. And the other thing too, is that we didn't envision the collaborative online catalog with SCAPUs. So some of our strategic plan activities have probably gotten pushed out a bit by the fact that these two projects come, came to us and they were real unique opportunities to do something to kind of take us to the next level.
Well.
Yes, I'll be glad to.
This virtual stuff has come in handy at just the right time, given the situation we're in right now. So thank you so much.
All right.
Counselor Carlson, how do you feel?
Yeah, I'm good.
You're good. Okay, so we got three thumbs up and that's enough to go forward on it. I will certainly add the fourth. And so it's a unanimous of people that are here that we can move forward on that. Are you okay with that, Kathy?
Yep, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you.
Anything else, Margaret?
Oh, I just probably should add that I contacted Marion Christiansen to see if her, if she had any objections to the change to a vinyl floor and the addition of the sink. And she was very much in favor of that. She felt that those were positive enhancements and would be usable even if the space wasn't a Makerspace. It'd be like, having a, a sink would make it even more usable as a meeting space. So she's on board with those changes too.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Next item is 3G review council goals. And I'd like to ask the council if we're okay going forward with this without the mayor. Shall we put this over until tonight, when the mayor will be available for comment? And how do you feel?
I would finish today, yes. If not, we ought to do it now.
Okay, Keith, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd like to hold us over for tonight and we discuss a little bit further.
I'm gonna hold it over.
So, Counselor Morton, if, if I can interject here, this is actually on the agenda for tonight for, for approval. So if you want to take the opportunity to talk about it now, it's really, you know, consolidation of the work that we've been doing over the last, feels like several, several meetings now. Is, you know, there's, there's two things. One of them is the adoption of the council goals. The other is a, the ground rules component of it. And there's two separate resolutions that are on for tonight, so.
Okay. John, you want to, okay, John, you want to take us through this then? The ball will be in your court looking at the, looking at our, at our goals and you can, you can guide us through this if you care to.
Thank you. It'd be, would be a pleasure. The, so what we've been working on, this is a product of, you know, like I said, several meetings and doing workshops and, you know, retreats to talk about strengths and weaknesses, opportunities and threats, both at the council level and the staff is, department heads have also come together and done that. And we've, just for observation, just try to align those two things and, and there's pretty good overlap. But the, you know, we're not changing a lot with, when it comes to the, the mission statement, although we are kind of pulling it apart to take the, the vision of providing, you know, quality, effective, efficient services to our community is the vision. And then in the old mission statement, it says, by doing so, we will. And that's essentially the same point, you know, delivering, develop and preserve the highest possible quality life for our residents, businesses and visitors, and providing a safe and healthy environment within a sound economic framework and providing leadership which is open and responsive to the needs of the community that works for the benefit of all. And that's been built into an executive summary statement that we'll, we'll have for our use. And then we get into the, the body of the, the goals document. And Matt and Rachel have just done a fantastic job with this. Try to consolidate what we're hearing from the council, what you want your goals to be. And you'll see this kind of a three-step breakdown of the detail. So that's, you know, the highest level step is just the goal areas, you know, very consistent with our previous years as far as having an effective and efficient organization, focusing energy on community and civic engagement, livability and safety, safe community, is always an economic development. And then the, the long-term planning, you know, looking at sustainability and long-term, making decisions today that will be valued in the future. So from those goal areas, there's objectives and tactics and as you can drill down on it, you can, goes pretty far. And, you know, there's, this is, you know, setting goals is always kind of a work in progress. It's very, very fluid and it seems like there's, you know, it's never quite perfect. I know we're trying to not let perfect, you know, stand in the way of progress, progress here. So we recognize it's a living document and it's subject to change and, you know, it's out of date the moments it's adopted. So on part two, the ground rules, this is not ground rules, it's a team agreement, is something we've shared in the past. It's councils have been posing on itself as far as conduct and things of that nature. And I won't read through all the, the points unless you want me to, but, but basically a commitment to, you know, be straightforward about the goals, continue to improve citizen's involvement, awareness and participation and, you know, following up on citizens' concerns and complaints and just being, being that advocate for the city and wanting more for our community here. So those are, those are both on the agenda for tonight as the mayors have seen them. So in fact, the executive summary is set up for his signature. That concludes my report on that. And let's see, want to have questions?
Yeah, let's open it up for, to the council for questions, concerns.
One, John, what does this, this team agreement, how much crosses over with our governing policy?
This, this could be part of the governing policy through an amendment. This could be merged with that, or certain elements of it could. And if you need more time with that one, I think that's something that you could easily pull off and take a look at.
Some of the introductions of these agreements get in the way of some of the official rules about talking to each other, especially with the problems of what constitutes an illegal meeting. Like if three or four counselors talk to each other, you're almost in violation of one rule, but in order to get the job done easily and well, three or four counselors should talk together, not in the council room. We're going to get into some close definitions with some of this and some, a lot of it is beyond our doing.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. Being a counselor is very difficult on the communications complying with the state, the state rules.
Steve, I think that if you hold, if you hold any of your emails to a point where they aren't going to, where they aren't addressed to all five council members or the, or four other council members, I think you're, I think you'll be okay with that. I think you'll be okay with calling a council member individually at a time to see how they weigh in and having a discussion with a, with a council member. That does not constitute, in my mind, a quorum. So anytime you invite a quorum, it's, it's, it's potentially has the ability to be there. So it does constitute an illegal meeting if you address an issue to all council and then all councils start to weigh in on it and your, we would be looking at conducting city business outside of a public meeting. However, you have the right to, with any kind, type of issue that you or concern that you have over an issue, to solicit another council member and say, what do you think about this? And are you in support of, of my resolution or my tact in following this? So you have all the, I think you have all the flexibility in the world to, to work through any kinds of problems if you do it one at a time. And that's my, that's my, that's my comment. And I talked, I, I, I checked that out with Susan Meyer at the Ethics Commission and it's the way to go about processing in a, in a quick manner, if you can possibly do that.
You get awful close if you talk to two or three people serially, too, under the law. That gets to be one of those shady places.
Yeah.
And.
I agree.
The other thing is if you say, give a copy of something to Kathy and say, would you shove it in all of the counselors' boxes? That comes under another set of rules. I think the rules that the state had given us really do not make for easy, complete communication to get jobs done.
I will tell you about it.
Whatever.
Yeah, I will tell you about a clarification that I had with the ethics people. And that is that if you, if you do something like that, ask Kathy to provide the council with an issue of concern and two or more members of the council weigh in on it, then yeah, that constitutes an illegal meeting. If no one weighs in on it and they just see it and look at it and put it on the back burner or they're aware of a certain issue that you're, that you're pressing, so be it. There's, there's no problem with it. So just as long as people don't respond and start an action plan on a promotion of an issue. And I, I think that, hopefully that's enough clarification for your question. I'm not certain.
That's as good as New England fog as far as, no doing.
I know you'd go to the East Coast for this one.
Yeah.
Counselor Topaz, this is Ed Trumkin. I grew up in Massachusetts, so I know what you're speaking of. But serial meetings are a problem in that no one has clarified what they really might be. And so I can't really give you any good advice about it, other than to say, try not to communicate with more than one or two other council members, especially in an email or in a, if you run into someone in the coffee shop, excuse me. But if, if there is an incidental communication, you run into somebody in the coffee shop and it happens to be the third or the fourth council member and you say, you know, I do support that, you can probably cure, pardon me, hay fever. You can probably cure any problem by disclosing it, pardon me, at the next meeting. But it's better to avoid the situation if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
It's one way to communicate, but it's not an efficient way to communicate.
Correct. And unfortunately, democracy requires an inefficient government. Only fascism is supposed to be efficient. So that's what we're stuck with.
Okay, let's, let's get back on task if we can and go back and, and, and look at our goal areas and with effective and efficient, our first goal, if you have that in front of you, our first goal, effective and efficient organization. And does anyone have any problems with the objective? And does anyone have any problems with the objectives and the tactics as they're in front of you? Any, any comments about any of the tactics or objectives as they're in front of you on goal one? Effective and efficient organization. I'll open it up to staff. Staff have any concerns? Comments? Okay, let's skip on down to golden, goal area number two, community and civic engagement. We have three objectives there and tactics. Anyone have any comments? Any council members have any comments on community and civic engagement for our goals? We're fine there?
Counselor Gordon, if just generally, I wanted to talk about the, the effort in putting, putting this together. We looked at how we measure, how do you measure success basically is the question. So we have, you know, these performance measures and, you know, outcomes and how, you know, for how are we doing to kind of check in kind of points? And I kind of classify those into two, two areas, one of them being the quantitative things that are easily measured, public works, you know, projects and things like that. And then some of the more intangible qualitative types of things where, you know, you have a, you know, community engagement or organizational culture, things like that, that seem a little more abstract. So we tried to find a balance with these. So I hope you can appreciate that. And if you have input, that'd be fantastic.
So. Thanks, thanks for that comment. Did everyone get kind of a glitch on that in their, on their computer or was that just me?
I think, yeah. The glitch may be an email coming into my.
Yeah. Okay. It was an email notification from John.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you, John, for adding that. Goal three, livable and safe community. I heard a lot about, a bit of a discussion earlier on about where we're at and that issue. We've got three objectives and it's any of our staff or counselors have any kind of comments or concerns with those objectives? Okay, let's go to goal area four, economic development. A little more sophisticated in terms of objectives and tactics. Do we have any kind of concerns there?
Under city-owned property, we have the administration and planning, somehow we have to have, we say some community input. Now I'm talking, I'm thinking more about expert community input as compared to general community input. We assume that only we know everything about what's going on and are the smartest people on the block. I think with the population we have, which does much of this work other places, that's one of those iffy places we need to add some horsepower.
I agree. And down in a with that, there's no, there's actually no place that I see that says general. As you, as you suggested or as you thought, read, where is that? Develop city-owned property for development. You said something about a general plan or a general approach opposed to a professional approach of some sort? Is that, I've got to make sure to clarify here.
But opening up some of the expertise we have in the community who are not professionals or consultants or the council or the staff. There are other people in town who know more than we do. It's just, that's just what they do for their business. And there doesn't seem to be a mechanism to let those people in, in a public way as compared to a general public, when everybody can come in a room and say whatever they want.
Okay, so this seems like a staff philosophy to, in, in an approach to engage more professional opinions. Do I hear anything from the staff?
I guess I would offer that, you know, through some of the plan documents created, like the waterfront, for instance, we've had pretty extensive community involvement and listening to anybody that want to talk about it. And some of the things that are more utility in nature as far as water lines and pipelines, that's kind of less so, that most people aren't real concerned about how big the water pipe is under your, you know, sidewalk or whatever.
Right, but.
That actually works, so.
But to, to, I think this is just my viewpoint, Counselor Topaz can weigh on if he thinks it. We have other people in our region doing economic development for industrial property. Point being the port of Columbia. To not involve them and part of that even to have a representative or consultant with people in our region that are doing way more industrial work and have been doing industrial work for decades. It seems like there's some people in our area that we should at least have a conversation with to get the local regional focus. I think that's what Mr. Topaz is saying, rather than operating in a vacuum.
That's correct.
And, and I agree that, that, I agree that that could be a philosophy of the staff to reach out to our resources that are immediate and, and it seems to me like just an approach.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it needs to be clarified here that John sits on regional, consults with regional solution, is on CCET board. He sits on all these regional teams, so he knows the players, I think, that you're speaking of to consult with. I'm pretty sure John has conversations with those people, at least quarterly, if not more often.
Oh, it's at least weekly sometimes, but yeah, the relationship with the port is strong. There are all of our partners at the state and to Business Oregon, the relationship is good.
There's just a lot of regional stuff. I'm seeing more and more treating all of Northwest Oregon as a region, that there's a lot of experts and a lot of kind of horsepower that maybe we could tap into and be more aware of regionally, that people like, wait, this, somebody might know of an opportunity that worked in Astoria or worked in Tillma County that could work here. And if we operate in a vacuum, then we will miss that.
Also, we don't want to operate in a vacuum. No one wants to do that, I'm sure. John, John, can you wordsmith this a bit to where the approach of the staff is to get the highest professional standards and work collaboratively with other organizations in our, in our vicinity to get the highest quality product we possibly can and expertise? So I don't know how you wordsmith that, but if you can, that's what, that would, that would, I think, answer and respond to Counselor Topaz's remarks.
But my, my question is not just specific to that one, but just in general. I think that sometimes we get so worried to get through things that we feel like, oh, we got it together and we forget that, wait, we have a guy that's an expert at this and he's only a mile down the road. Maybe we should at least send him an email. And that's a philosophy, not just about industrial
Exactly.
But about Main Street, about whatever, that we shouldn't be ignoring people that are just up the road.
A philosophy and an approach. I, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, and not specific to industrial.
Well, and I think that's why those types of collaborations are showing up into the effective and efficient covering up under the goal area one where we're working with our peers and partners and it may not be as clearly articulated as it was in past council goals, but that, that notion of having relationships and building on relationships and leveraging assets and things that is, is heard.
Maybe, maybe as we go through this, and because right now these are goals, but maybe as we work toward them, maybe those people, those contacts need to be identified as footnotes because I know that you're having those conversations, but if you make it part of your report, we're working on this and we've talked to the port or we've talked to regional solutions and we've got this idea and we found this program would be super cool for us to know, just to kind of vocalize your due diligence about those contacts.
Okay.
The, the other part about doing that, when the public reads this and to realize we're reaching out to all possible smarts as compared to just us, now I think that makes the community a little bit happier with what we're doing too. So we have to articulate it in a visible way as compared to a hidden way.
Yeah, I think the key is to consult with expertise, no matter what issues we're dealing with. It doesn't matter if it's roofing or plumbing or electrical or whatever. We get to the expertise of what's available to us in our community, which is going to be cost-effective as well. And keeping it local is always a good thing to do. So John, do you kind of hear that? I don't know if we can wordsmith that in somewhere in, so that it's, so that it, it kind of expands over all five goal areas?
Well, I think all of the goal areas to some extent overlap each other. So that just because it's not showing up in, in the specific goal area under economic development doesn't mean it's not part of an effective and efficient organization or more have to do with public safety or engagement.
Yeah, I mean, it says in the very top one, effective, efficient. It says attend regional meetings, represent community. So I mean, I think that, you know, a detail under that, you know, understood is it's for their resources, for their input, for their expertise, because that is about being effective. We'll be effective at all these things because we're connected to all those people. That's what I understand it.
Could that be spelled out in the executive summary rather than in the specific goals?
Just looking at, see, see it right now. It's captured in there.
I think if it was in the executive summary, then it would expand over all the goals that are there and, and it will be covered. And I think Topaz brings up a good point that, that, that are, and, and you too, Jenny, as a, as a, as a community reads through this, they've got to know that we are doing those things, that our staff is reaching out to expertise in our, in our, in our immediate community, if possible, and extended community as well.
Yeah, in previous versions, there was some comment about local, state and regional, local, regional, state and federal partners or something to that. Just need to elaborate on just a little bit, but.
Would you be comfortable, would you be comfortable wordsmithing something like that into our executive summary? As an approach?
We can, sure.
Council has said, did we, we get a consensus on this?
It's at least a reminder to kind of hold us all accountable. You know, I think it's a good reminder to all the council to just take a pause and go, wait a minute, have we checked with them? And what's their feedback kind of thing?
Steve, are you okay with it, with, with doing that, going that approach?
I would like to be, see a little more definitive. It's supposed to be the, we may think it's there, want other people to know it's there. So that comes into how it's wordsmithed in.
Okay. And Keith, how about you?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
All right, so we'll run this by the mayor when, this evening, when he gets here. So he knows what we've been up to. We need to go to goal area five, I believe. And was there any more on, any more on economic development? Goal area four. Goal area five, long-term planning. We've got three issues on that, three objectives. Any comments, any concerns? Staff or council?
Obviously with, with future planning, given what we don't know about the coming year's budget, that could affect this. As John stated at the beginning, this document is fluid, it's not permanent.
Exactly.
All this is money dependent.
It is.
The other thing is, the way we're operating right now wasn't the way we were operating before the virus. So somehow we have to admit to ourselves that we have to change things, even though it may be difficult, just because the outside circumstances changed beyond what we had ever dreamed of. We have to do that anyway. Hopefully we ought to tell everybody that we're good enough to do that if it happens.
Thank you for that comment.
Yeah, I think the, the message with the goals is there's a financial component for sure and they relate to it, but it's also your staff and the energy where we're expending our energy and what, what rises to the level of priority and, you know, finding that balance. So on the goal list, it's going to be a higher, higher priority.
John, thank you for taking us through that. I very much appreciate it. I kind of dumped it on your, on your lap, but
My pleasure.
Thank you very much for doing it. Let's move on to department reports if we're finished with that. What do you got? Counselor Locke, what do you have?
Well, I just, I like the fact that this is, I'm assuming this is a starting point and this is, is a living document. My
Yeah.
Now, I'm kind of scared that, you know, oh, we have this document, it has everything on it, but I, I know there's probably stuff missing or could change real quickly or there's all kinds of different things that could happen to it and whatnot. So it needs, part of the process needs to be that we need to go through this document occasionally to make sure that it is up to date and everything's on it and it's being followed through with.
Good point. Any comments with that?
The, then the question comes, do you have an automatic renewal of the document times every 10 years, every 50 years, every three months? Have a schedule for when it's reviewed?
Well, the last time we reviewed it was what, two years ago?
I believe that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so it's like either, you know, annually, we can look at it annually at, at our retreat. It would be something to go over at, at a retreat and or bring it up in a work session occasionally.
Yeah, as long as it's stated that, you know, at least every two years, we're going to look at it. One year is almost tight with some of these things. When you realize by the time you put in a grant, get money and get started, you've shot your year.
I mean, some of the projects get reviewed because of the budget.
That's correct.
You know, so project lists get looked at every single year. And bigger things take longer lead-in time than that. So that, I think that's the white reason for the two-year lead-out.
Yeah, and, and this really gives, this is really a good tool for the budget committee to look at the goals and remind them what, what our mission and our vision is, is. So it's, it's a good tool and it, and I appreciate the fact that, that we're weighing in on how much, how, what the, what the time, timing is on reviewing it. The duration of this in a sense, before it needs to, before it needs to be implemented or changed or augmented. Okay, we, we got far enough on the issue of goals. And well, we'll kind of like revisit it tonight briefly with the, with the mayor. Let's go on to department reports and we'll, we'll start with the Public Works report. Do you have a PDF file for that by chance? Sue?
For a PDF file for which?
I don't know. It says department reports, Public Works, Department Report, Public Works, Department I don't know. It says department reports, Public Works, Department Report, Public Works, Department Report. Dot PDF. That's what I'm, I'm asking on the agenda, what that means.
That doesn't appear on the agenda that I have.
Is that in the packet?
Yeah, there, there is just our monthly activity report for the month of March in the packet. Yeah, alls I have to report really is just that the Public Works Department is still functioning with some altered schedules. We're practicing, um, you know, all the safe protocols with our staff. Uh, as Margaret mentioned, they have had some people over helping, doing some of the painting so far in the library. Or not in the library itself, but in the lobby and some of the other areas inside while they have this opportunity. While the, it's closed to the public, that's a good time for them to be able to get in there and do some of this work without disrupting too many things. Um, and then also, as it was mentioned earlier, we were successful in obtaining the Blazers Moda Assist Program grant funding. We don't know the exact amount of that yet because of the shortened season of the NBA basketball season this year. So at the close of the last time that they had a tally of the assists, the, the grant is awarded based on the number of assists that the Blazers make during their regular season. And at the last tally of that was 1,333 assists. So if it's $20 for every assist, so if they just base it on that, we would get a minimum of $26,660. But they have communicated with us and said that because of the shortened season that they will be adjusting the amount, probably based on past rewards. So I would anticipate getting something a little bit more than that $26,000 to put towards some all-inclusive play equipment for McCormick Park. So we're excited to hear what the final tally is going to be and what kind of, um, equipment we'll be able to purchase with that to, to go into the park. It will be a, a really great addition to that. And I really want to thank the efforts of Crystal, Shawna, and Carmen Dunn, our Parks and Trails Commission Chair. They did an excellent job of getting the word out and reminding people to vote and we won by a landslide. So that was really great.
It tells you a lot about our community, doesn't it?
It tells a lot about the community and all of the people around that, that took the time to vote. We absolutely appreciate every single one of the times you logged in and voted. It, it's going to make a huge difference. So.
While, Sue, while you're on parks, uh, can you, you're aware of the, uh, Portland Garden Club grant? That went to Nob Hill Nature Park?
I have not heard that.
They won that and it's a $500 grant.
Oh, good for them.
I think, uh, I, I think the Nob Hill Nature Park people had been communicating with, uh, with Matt. Where, where and how that money is going to be spent.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's, that's, the parks are doing well.
Well, holding our own, yes, through, through grants, through the benefit of grants.
Exactly. Okay, Chief, uh, are you finished, Sue?
Count, thank you, Councilor Martin.
Okay, Chief, what do you have?
Counselor, I have nothing to report on. The Columbia County has 14 confirmed cases of COVID. Um, and that's all we have, no deaths yet in Columbia County. So we're holding our own at the police department and appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you for your, thank you for your previous comments and, uh, and, and, uh, your report. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for all you do. Margaret? At the library?
Yes. We're continuing to, um, offer, uh, virtual storytimes twice a week. If you consult the library's Facebook page, you'll see our youth librarian on Tuesdays and Thursdays, um, offering a, um, uh, storytime. It's getting better every week. She's, um, learning better how to edit her video and, um, doing some up-close shots of the books that she's reading to young children. And, um, we also have, I mentioned earlier, but we continue to have vendors that are offering our subscription content, um, for free during this period. And we also have, as I mentioned before, instituted a digital library card where you can go on to our webpage and sign up for a digital library card that will allow you to get eBooks, audiobooks, uh, digital magazines, streaming music and downloadable music during this period. And you don't have to ha- already have a library card, although your library card has always worked for these things. But you, if you don't currently have a library card, you can do this at no cost to you and no cost to the library. And we're trying to promote that for people who are missing out on their reading experiences. They can do it digitally. There is a little bit of a delay from the time you sign up for a library card until, um, you can actually access the eBooks. There's like a 24-hour delay. But, um, we're pleased to be able to offer that and we, again, I need to reiterate, we've made policy changes. We've pushed out the due dates for everything that people had in their possession. There are no overdue fines. We pushed out the expiration date on everybody's library card so they can continue to access this digital content. So I guess the next thing that we're going to have to start thinking about is our plans for opening the library. And I'm, um, paying a lot of attention to things on, uh, listservs among the library directors and the state library. And there are some, um, ideas being put out there about a staged or evolving opening of the facility. And I think this will provide a lot of fodder for discussion as we readmit the public during this time. So, um, I hope to, um, work on that and develop some things that, um, maybe we'll have to discuss in staff meetings as well, because I'm sure the rest of the city will be, um, facing those same issues as well. So that's all I have right now.
Thank you, Margaret. Uh, Matt, what do you have?
Uh, nothing too much to report. Finance and utility billing and court are still working almost every single day. We still have everything going on. Um, I have taken some opportunity to start going through some of our municipal code for business licenses and clean, taking some advantages of the time I have to clean up some of that language and stuff. It's always a fun time to write municipal code. So, uh, that is out for staff review right now. Um, and hopefully coming to you sometime in the very near future. Um, other than that, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Matt. Tina here? Is Tina involved today?
Yeah.
Tina, what do you have?
Well, I first wanted to, um, just thank Chief Greenway and his officers. I had some concerns and, uh, they responded so quickly and professionally that I just really appreciated that, uh, that quick attention to allow me to get back to some folks. And, um, I always hear really positive things about the police department. So it's just, uh, a little thank you for helping me. The, um, other thing I wanted to let you know is that, uh, as John stated, tourism has shifted to local tourism. And I have, uh, been reaching out, uh, person by person with phone calls and personal messages. And we're going to be doing a, um, food adventures program to offer cross-promotion to our sites, to all of the businesses that are food-related. And the other businesses are being, uh, personally touched, uh, regarding the new Explore Local app that, uh, we have, uh, been a part of. The other thing that is going on was an idea that Jenny gave me and it's for, it's called Heart Hunters. And that is going out this week. We'll be putting hearts up on businesses around town. And the purpose of that is just to let people have a moment of, um, thanking folks that are compassionate and giving and, uh, putting a heart there on the window so that parents can drive with their kids. And it's called Heart Hunter. So if you see hearts around town, that's another, uh, project that I'm doing. We also, uh, I have a new, uh, physical distance idea that I'm talking to, to John with, uh, maybe later today, which is a family activity for physical distancing. But it includes other friends that they may not be seeing, of course, uh, during this timeframe, but it allows them for a really fun activity between families. And it's kind of a challenge. The other, uh, thing that I'm working on is called Keep Your Distance Dinner Parties. And it's a promotion with restaurants and food providers that is going to encourage them to get food from the same restaurant and then have a dinner party online and pictures and, uh, share them about how you can still be a part of each other's lives, even though physically you might not be able to right now. So, um, if you see Keep Your Distance Dinner Party, that's where that's coming from. Also, I wanted to, um, thank, uh, Thad and, uh, his crew and Sue and Public Works for the help that they are able to give. Uh, I also have a separate independent crew that is working on cleaning up some of the, um, park area that we will want to use in the future. And they're deep in the thick of, uh, poison oak. So they sent me pictures today of them all suited up and, uh, ready to do the deep dive. So hopefully they will be able to return to work after this, uh, escapade into the bright green weeds. I think that's it. If anyone has any questions, um, and I've also just been putting on to all, all of our pages for any business to contact us if they have a message that they want to get out or something important. One, um, thing that Jenny brought up, uh, which is a great idea, except it seems to be kind of a revolving number is, uh, you know, listing places that are open because people are changing their hours a lot, quite a bit. And, um, so that's a little bit more difficult to track, but I think it might be someplace where we could, uh, maybe allow them to submit what times they're going to be open. So it is all in one place at one time. Maybe we can use Discover Columbia County for that effect. I don't know. But that's something that, um, I can ask the computer side of things to see if we could make that available and really simple. But, uh, if anyone has any questions, that's what I have been doing as well as still working on the permitting for the Masonic.
One more time, uh, Tina, what's the, what's the official name of that dinner with friends?
Oh, it's called Keep Your Distance Dinner Party.
Keep Your Distance, that sounds like a, that sounds like a darn good diet for me. All right.
I have something that I discovered I hadn't had a chance to share with, uh, physical distancing. The, all of the movie theaters have, the big studios have held their releases to, because they don't want to miss making all the money. But independent films are releasing and you can stream them and they are splitting all their profits with local independent theaters. And I believe our local, um, historic theater is now signed up to participate. So people would be able to watch a movie in their house and half of their money would go to the old theater downtown.
Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah, so, and there was just this last, like, three weeks ago, the top grossing film was a film actually made in Phoenix, Oregon. An independent film and it only cost 650 and 350 of that would go, your, your whole family could watch it for 650 and 325 of that would go to the theater. So it's just like for people that want to go to the movies and you can't or want to support the theater and maybe need to shelter in place, there are other ways. You know, I just think a list that creative ways to support local business and support Main Street, I think that we would do the community a service to be spreading that news about.
Yeah.
It might not be specific minutes or specific hours, but it'll be like, these are businesses that are still trying to stay open. Please contact their website, call their phone number, check their Facebook page. These people have not closed. They are still here for you, serving your community.
Yeah, so as long as they contact us, that, that we certainly do provide that service right now. So I've got the, uh, word in the ear of quite a few businesses, but hopefully they will share that information too, because not everybody is answering their phones right now or their emails for that matter.
Yeah, they're running lean and mean if they are open.
Yeah.
Crystal, are you still there? All right, Tina, are you finished? Tina?
I can't, uh, yes, I am.
Okay, thank you for your, thank you for your report.
Yeah.
Crystal, are you still available?
I am still here.
Uh, any, any, anything to report?
I think. Oh, nothing else to report, but I, I think Tina and Discover Columbia County or her Columbia County Events Facebook page would be an excellent resource for that business promotion. So I can, uh, touch base with her offline and, um, talk to her about how we as the city can help coordinate and promote that.
Oh, wonderful. Good idea. Anything else?
That's all for me.
Okay. Kathy, how about you?
Nope, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, and then we'll swing on over to John. Uh, you got any, uh, any additional thing to report today?
The, uh, as, as maybe expected here, this, the COVID event is really consuming, continues to consume a lot of time and, you know, shout out to Crystal on the communications, the department heads, and really the whole organization's doing their part to, uh, you know, stay safe, try to keep the community safe, try to provide these essential services that are vital to our community, making it through this pandemic. And it's, you know, it's, it's a new normal and we're, we're kind of figuring it out as we go and it hasn't always been easy and it probably won't be in the future. And, you know, to, to that effort, uh, and my part is we're, you know, participating in conference, you know, weekly conferences with League Organ Cities, the regional, regional groups addressing this and it's, the, it's starting to move from response into, um, you know, the recovery mode where we're coming back online, thinking about how we're going to, you know, fire things back up and and there's, there's a lot of people thinking about it across the, the state and, uh, the nation probably in the world. So wanted to share that. Community development, you know, the, the city hall's been closed. But that has, really hasn't slowed activity. I, from what I can see at all, Matt reported earlier that, you know, we're on a five-year high and with, take a look at the projects in the queue coming in, it looks like next year could be, you know, equal or even better. In your perspective, but it's, it's been a lot of work. I mean, you know, Jacob and planning and Jenny have been doing a fantastic job trying to keep up with it. Working on the, the build application, resubmital of that. And if you'll recall, this, this year's approach is a little bit different. We're, rather than having the, the boardwalk be the eccentric theme of the, the application, it's going to be more about the, the physical roadway connecting, you know, First Street to Plymouth and Strand to First. And, but still considering the boardwalks through a separate funding, state funding applications. We're looking at a, about a million and a half dollar project to move a Phase One Riverfront project to take off from the top of the docks and extend this, you know, as far south as we can get with, with the funding that we achieved. So that's a really exciting project. Hopefully there tends to charm and and just a, and aside that, uh, that if you haven't had the opportunity to go see the Nike-funded Fifth Street Trail Project and experience that, though, it's very well done. It's, uh, you know, it's a nice day for it and I encourage anybody to do that. That's about all I have. So, and, you know, special thanks to the Youth Corps and all their work with that and the Public Works for the boardwalk that kind of runs through that little quiet space and inside of town here. That's it.
Thanks, John. Uh, just, just piggybacking on that, a great. Just, just piggybacking on that, great, it's really a wonderful walk from the Fourth Street parking lot to the, if you go down basically South Fourth until it ends from there, and it, and it loops back around down into Fifth, into that Fifth Street right away. Beautiful, beautiful little walk. And then back up the stairs to, that's, that's on, that takes you up to Fourth Street and then back, then you can walk a short distance back into the parking lot. That's a nice walk. You can also loop around Sixth Street if you care to. It's just a, it's just a great addition to that, to that area. Yeah, very well done as well. Let's go on to, let's continue and go on with any other, did I miss anyone on department reports? Okay, let's go to council reports and start with Keith. What do you have?
Don't really have anything this afternoon, but I'll probably come up with something for tonight.
Oh, I know you will. And Jenny, what do you have?
I've been having meetings pretty regularly via Zoom with the Chamber of Commerce, and they are working on going forward with an all volunteer team. They have quite a few ambassadors, and we're just getting that program started. So as John stated, people are in the recovery mode. And what does that look like? And supporting the businesses that are still open, which I really appreciate. And I just can't say thank you enough to staff for watching our budget and, you know, guarding our resources and being good stewards of our assets to protect our community and all the people doing their services out there. I see them working. I did appreciate seeing some of our Public Works trucks with the new logo on them. I can see them clearly. It doesn't look like a county truck, doesn't look like a state truck. It's St. Helens and it's really cool, St. Helens pride. It's, it's really feels good out there when you feel all alone in the physical distance to see the guys and wave at them, and they're waving back. It's just super great to see people working together just at this really difficult time for our small community. And I just appreciate that. I've had council, you know, calls from citizens just worried. And it just makes me feel good to have such a good staff that's looking out for, you know, making sure that everything's covered while we're separate. I just wanted to say thank you to all the people that are still going to work every day because it is stressful to leave your home in this, you know, shelter-at-home type of place. I'm a central worker myself, so I definitely feel that pressure every time I leave the house. And I'm just glad to see everybody well and still doing such great work. And happy birthday to the mayor, in case I forgot earlier. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jenny. Councilor Topaz?
I have a number of things. Two things on the, let's do it to the community. The Food Bank could use a couple of volunteer drivers, and they're getting overloaded, as you can well understand. The other thing for the community is the Fourth of July is coming, and Judy Thompson is still planning to ring the bell. So you'll hear about that and maybe an expanded program on that. Now, on the more serious budget agenda, is I read two documents recently, and I was a little bit upset. Not with the document that, but parts of the document that weren't made were say outstandingly public. And let's start off with the waterfront boardwalk. And this is, the document is the failed grant. And as you possibly know, the grant was supposed to be a matching fund operation. And in the grant, it says the matching funds will be the tipping fees from the lagoon. Well, it sounded like in this that somebody made a decision that in fact the lagoon is going to be a dump. Reading the document from Moore Forster on what they found out about the lagoon, there was three parts, kind of the front, everything's okay, this is what we found, this data, second, and then there's a couple of appendices. And you found out that it's kind of okay, we're still finding out stuff. That's the first nice part. There's a couple of pieces of data that just don't match. And for such an expensive piece of investigation, how you take a hundred and some temperature readings and mislabel them is a little bit hard to believe. The other thing that the, one of the appendices, I think it's the appendices H, says, well, we don't feel that you should fill this thing in above the present levy, but the city wants to add 40 feet to that. Okay, and then they go on to say that this area is going to be so unstable to build anything on it, you're going to need an extremely large amount of work for foundations and soil stabilization. Okay, that's one of those things. Now, then there's two statements, one in the lagoon and one in the waterfront. It's also a little more disturbing. In the lagoon, we're not going to go below certain things because if we do, we're going to run into requiring permits and studies from the Army Corps. So we're not going there. And on the boardwalk, we're not going to build to the water. We're going to just stay on top so we don't have to go into the permitting. In each of those cases, when you do that, basically locked up forever the conditions that you build on, and you can't really change it or expand it or accomplish what even the framework said. Now, the next thing that I ran into is, and I brought this up before, was the reservoir fix-up project. And now we're going to put another liner into it. And looking into that, one of the mentions I made was, hey, we're dumping a whole lot of chlorinated water down the stream, to which I was told everything's okay. And I asked Matt about how much it costs to get the material to get rid of the chlorine. And that went into getting me brought before the Ethics Committee for bothering him. Well, further down the road, publication in our water bill about this is the chlorine that came out of the reservoir. And I think it was about 44 parts per billion. I looked into that, and the sample of water was taken in a mason jar 100 yards from the outflow. Okay, as compared to right at the outflow of the dechlorination unit. But the situation is such that the water that was sampled was running about five gallons a minute. And it was dumped to this stream 100 yards from the outflow, which is 100 yards from the valve. So we've got a whole bunch of chlorine that's missing. Plus, we don't know how much chlorine was in the reservoir because it's a big pond and chlorine comes off the surface. So I'm finding a whole lot of misinformation. Now, I know if you take a gas sample, you've got to take the temperature of the water, and you've got to basically have that test done in the five minutes, or the gas dynamics really say the number you just got was wrong. So I'm getting a whole lot of half pieces of information. And when I look at these different projects and I find out the other information that I'm running into, I'm getting a little bit upset about really what's happening. Okay, that's what I have to say. We got some problems in good communication. We've got some need in the community. Let's do it.
Thank you, Mr. Topaz. And I just, I, just for clarification, after looking at and understanding our, our water treatment and water filtration plant, Howie, who's the plant manager, tells, tells, tells us and it's documented that there are hardly any chlorine that goes into our drinking water. And Sue, I don't know if you can weigh in on this or not, but can you reactivate your voice? And can you tell us how much chlorine parts per million we're at? Or can you tell us about the chlorination? Because I asked Howie the same question. He says, oh, we don't put any chlorine. And he says, every now and then, we'll do something with chlorine to, but it's a very, very minute amount. And how that all ends up in the ditch, I have no idea if, if Mr. Topaz is correct about taking samples out of a ditch. But that's Mr.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I don't know off the top of my head what our typical residual is in the finished water that is produced at the water filtration facility. I can certainly get that very quickly for you, but I don't, I don't have it at the tip of my fingers. When we were filling to test the reservoir, the one with the defective liner in it right now, we did drain that water, and it does go into a roadside ditch that was, and we do, we dechlorinate it before it gets to the ditch. The water was actually tested in multiple locations alongside the ditch. And then it runs in an open channel ditch before it is ultimately discharged into Milton Creek. That discharge location is about almost a half a mile away, just slightly less than a half a mile away from where the reservoirs are located. And they, the Public Works people that take those tests, they've been trained, they know how to take the residual tests. So those are done according to the standards that are required to, to perform that type of test.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for just weighing in on that. And.
One more thing, Doug. When the reservoirs were being dumped, the water level in the ditch was about foot and a half deep. The top width was four feet. When the sample was taken, the depth of the water was inch. Water flow about five gallons a minute. Width was about 18 inches. When the large amount of water was being dumped, when the ditch was full, four foot thick, is running a few thousand gallons a minute. It was also loaded with the ground-up epoxy surface. And the sample was not taken when they were dumping. It was at a very low level, and there's also a dilution of the groundwater. The other thing that I know is the EPA has told me that you require a permit to dump even a large amount of good fresh water with no chlorine in it. And I, they did not know of a permit being filed for dumping. And that's, these are some of the things I'm trying to straighten out.
No, I've been in contact with them, and we have not violated any, any regulations whatsoever with what was being done. I can't comment on the water levels that you are mentioning because I was not physically there when those samples were taken. However, the discharge line is only a four-inch line. So there is not a lot of water that is discharged from that at any given time. I have absolutely no idea what material it is that you're mentioning that was present in the ditch line because there was no loose material in the reservoir itself. It was thoroughly, thoroughly cleaned. That material was all removed, vacuumed out. The, basically, the interior was squeegeed down and completely cleaned before any water was placed in it. So if there was material in the ditch, I can't imagine that it came from there.
It came out of there and put it under the microscope. Something came out of there that looks like ground epoxy. So somehow, a lot of stuff got into that stream bed. And I, you know, as I say, I inspected it under the microscope, I can prove that.
I can't comment on that, and I can't comment on where it came from because I did not see it. I did not, I, I don't have any background on that.
Councilor Topaz, you could help out the city a tremendous amount. If you would just, if you would just ask the city to make certain that they, they take a sample, and you can go up with them while they're taking a sample and, and work as a team. You, you, you have an expertise at that, apparently. You have a microscope, apparently. And so why don't you work with, with, give, give a call and work with, with the Public Works guys? And they'd be open to that. I mean, you have.
Thrown off the facility by the contractor on instructions from the inspector Tim. So I've done what you've said and didn't go very far.
Really?
There, there was a time when we had all, all non-essential people that were trying to access that site because Mr. Topaz was not the only one. There were several civilians that were trying to enter the work zone when there was actual work going on. This happened quite some time ago. But the invitation has been put out. I know it was put out by former operations director Neil Shepherd, and who specifically contacted Mr. Topaz and invited him to come up there with him, that he would take him up there. And I do not believe that that invitation was ever reciprocated.
That's correct, Sue. No heavy work was being done that I was particularly interested. But Neil did invite me out, and I, at the time, we had no need to go at that point. But yeah, I thank you very much for that, by the way.
Yes, and, you know, we're happy to take you up there. We just need to have arranged in advance.
So hopefully, so hopefully it can alleviate these kinds of concerns of wrongdoing and, and rightdoing and being effective and not effective. So everyone can get through this, okay? Thanks, thanks. I have a very limited report. And all I need to say is that when I heard the, about what was on the agenda, I did go to interview a couple of the Public Works fellows, one a supervisor, and ask, and ask them, you know, what their feelings were. And they were, and I think our police chief, during his testimony, really reiterated exactly what the Public Works guys, they feel that they would be put in dangerous way if, you know, if we go forward opening up McCormick Park as a, as a homeless camp. Now, that, that, that's what I heard. And it was kind of like through the grapevine, but that was it. And so I asked, I asked also our parks people. And the parks, the parks guys just shook their head, and they go, please, please do not put us in that kind of danger that we have to go in and clean up after parks people. And, and I recall the reason that we, that we went forward on our no camping in McCormick Park and in public spaces on the streets and in, on public property is that there were so many needles and so much, there was so much debris left in certain areas. I know that in one area, Off Brotherford Trail, two of those huge containers were full of trash. Thank you taxpayers for paying that bill for getting those containers down there, having our Public Works and Parks crews clean that up. And, you know, that's when we said enough is enough, and, and we went forward on that ordinance. I think Jenny, you spoke very, very vividly about the issue at the time when we went forward on that ordinance. So we're taking that, we're taking that ordinance very serious and hopefully, hopefully trying to prevent disease. We're trying to keep our, our crews safe. We're trying, we're trying to keep our citizens safe. And guess what? We have our parks open for people to go out and enjoy. And from everything that I've seen, everyone's keeping a safe distance. We've got numerous parks that people are facilitating to walk through some of the new trails that John alluded to. I went up there, my wife and I walked through that, that trail. We were kind of walking slow and meandering around. We went to one area that seemed to be just a beautiful meadow full of camas in bloom. And, you know, people kept their distance. There were some people behind us, and, you know, they, they asked, they said, are you guys going to continue on? No, we're going to go off. Everyone's communicating. Now we're going to go off, everyone's communicating. I just thought it was very effective. So now comes an issue of what are we going to do with, with showers in our parks? And my question is very simple, why the city and why the city parks has been the focus of this? What, who, what outside forces kind of come to the, involves and focused on the city? There's so many other avenues to explore, I feel. But more about that as we deliberate on what can happen with that proposal. That's all I have. I want our community to be safe, safe for our workers, safe for our staff, and safe for the public, and especially the children. Any other comments?
Don't forget, we have public hearing.
Public hearing at, do you do, 6:30, is that correct? Public hearing tonight at 6:30, and thank you, Jenny, for the reminder.
Sometimes we get going and people forget to be back at 6:30, and just give yourself time to get logged in.
Got it. Okay, thanks for the reminder, Jenny, appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, and with that, we will adjourn.